Good morning.
Good morning.
Today is Saturday, November 19th, 2022. It's 9:30 a.m. We are in the city chambers and I call the City Commission Special Meeting to order. Commissioners present are Commissioner McDowell, Commissioner White, Mayor Emmerich, Vice Mayor Langdon, and Commissioner Luke. There is a quorum present for this meeting. Also present, we have City Manager Fletcher, City Attorney Slaton, City Clerk Fost, Assistant City Clerk Giannelli, and we have Fire Chief Titus in the back. I'm going to call on Vice Mayor Langdon if she will lead us in the pledge this morning.
Certainly, good morning, Mayor. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, we have item number...oh, do we have any public comment? Online public comment?
We do not.
We have in person, but no online. Okay. Former Commissioner...yeah. We have a motion on the floor to approve the agenda as presented. Second. That was made by Commissioner McDowell, seconded by Commissioner Luke. And that passes five to zero. And before we get started, I wanted to say, recognize County Commissioner Ron Cuttsinger is in the House. And...thank you. And we have former Commissioner Mayor Lynda Yates, and she's up for public comment.
Well, it's been a while. As a former Commissioner, I just want to thank you all for the jobs that you're doing. And it's just wonderful to see as the city moves along and the job that you've done with the challenges just over the past short period of time. So, thank you all for that. And as a resident of this city, thank you as well. And Commissioner Luke, I just want to express my dear sincere appreciation for everything you've done. Your passion for this city has been overwhelming. It's just been great. You've been out there and everywhere, and it's noticed and very much, very much appreciated. It's...it would be wonderful if you could go for another term. And I know the rules changed a few years ago, but your service definitely has been something that we all greatly, greatly appreciate. I truly wish you the best in your future endeavors, whatever they may be. But I wanted to express how much it's noticed in everything that you've done for this community. And really, you talked about the partnerships, the camaraderie, and everything from when you first came into office, and you truly, truly delivered on everything that you said. So, thank you so much. That's the best that we all can hope for. Of course, you know, not everybody agrees with everything that one person may say or do, but certainly your passion and your heart is there in the community, and I wish you, wish you well in everything that you do. And to Commissioner, or Commissioner-elect Phil Stokes, wow, you're going to really get a feel for what this is all about, and I wish you the best, and I appreciate your willingness to step up and serve the community. So, I wish you all the best, and you have certainly a lot of folks that you can rely on. If you need anything, just reach out, and I'm sure you'll be able to get the help that you need. So, I wish you well in, as you come into this position. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to the announcement of the election results. City Clerk, can you announce the election results?
Yes, I can. For the city of Northport District 4, Pete Emmerich was on opposed. For the city of Northport District 5, the whole number of votes cast was 27,609, of which Victor Dobrin received 13,555 votes, and Philip Stokes received 14,054 votes. For the city of Northport referendum question one relative to financing the Price Boulevard widening project by authorizing the issuance of bonds in one or more series payable from one cent sales tax proceeds in a total aggregate principal amount not to exceed $80 million maturing by December 31st, 2039, bearing interest not to exceed the maximum lawful rate. Yes for approval received 19,625 votes, and no for rejection received 10,203 votes. For the city of Northport referendum question two relative to amending the charter to direct the city manager to sign all contracts and allow the city commission to authorize the city manager to enter into certain contracts without prior commission approval and to establish conditions for that authority such as financial limits. Yes for approval received 11,179 votes, and no for rejectin...rejection received 17,975 votes. And that is all.
Thank you. I will entertain the motion.
I'll make a motion, Mayor. I move to accept the election results as presented.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Langdon to accept the election results as presented, seconded by Commissioner McDowell. Anything to that?
No, sir.
And that passes five to zero. Okay. We are going to item number three, 22-3568, presentation of plaque and Commissioner's statement, recognition of outgoing commissioners. We're going down front. I take it. We are presenting this to you in appreciation for your dedication and commitment as a Commissioner. City of Northport, 2017 to 2022. Thank you so much for your service and dedication to this city.
I don't know if I've ever seen an award to match me as much as this one does. Absolutely gorgeous. Thank you so very much. I don't know if my...well, my little car is probably going to be going through withdrawals in the morning. It's so used to taking off from the house, going over to get my Mountain Dew, and then headed to the office. So, it's going to be very strange to break that routine. But I want to thank everybody in the community to start with, because that's why we do what we do in this government. Thank you for your support. Thank you for your friendship. Thank you for being you, because you make me me. I was Jill before I came into office and known as Jill to everybody in the community. I'm Jill going out, but hopefully I was Jill the entire way through my service also, because you're my friends and always will be my friends, and I thank you. To the staff here, oh my goodness. It was, it was...Lynda stated it right. There's been so many challenges and stuff that have gone on, and there's been a lot of changes within staff, but I see the city internally growing to become its full potential. And so, to the staff that remains, thank you for your diligence. To the staff that's new, thank you for being present and making us the best that we can be. To the directors, the assistant managers, our city manager, and to our charter officers. And path is golden. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your dedication. Always keep in mind the reason that we're doing this, and that is that 81,000 people out there headed to a quarter of a million. My last thank you is to these guys right here. I stated not too long ago that I view this commission as fierce. I've been with Debbie the longest. We come into the office every day, see each other, and it's been a great relationship as friends that has built outside of serving as a Commissioner. Pete, I've known longer just because of the community. I'm proud of what you did as mayor. You stayed who you were and just polished yourself up, and I'm proud of you. Thank you. Alice, I had the pleasure of nominating her as Citizen of the Year. Most of the people in the city don't realize what this woman has done for decades for this city. I met her through Patriot Storage and found out all the things that she had done. It was just overwhelming to me that one teacher could do all that she did. She's multi-talented. I'm extremely proud of her coming into office and bringing who she is, bringing that teacher, bringing that experience from living in this city for decades. And I'm thankful for the friendship that we have developed through this time also. Our Vice Mayor, soon-to-be Mayor. I have come to know Barb over this last two years. Cherish her. I really found out who she was like at the Halloween. Found out the background and history when we went through the retreat. She's an amazing woman. Amazing woman. She's got her head on straight, as all of us, we have these fixed things the way we view, but this woman opens the book. She doesn't just leave everything to how she felt going in. She adjusts, she compromises, she's professional. I've seen her fill in under the mayor a couple of times, and she's excellent at handling a meeting. I can leave knowing that this commission's fierceness is going to continue. They're going to do great things. Phil is going to come in, roar, he's going to be fierce, and we'll accomplish what we need to accomplish in the future. Thank you. I love you. I'm still going to be around. Appreciate you.
It...no, it's okay. I'm just teasing. It is a privilege and an honor for me to present to Mayor Pete this gavel in recognition of his truly exceptional leadership this year. I mean, this, this year was not a walk in the park, and Mayor Emmerich really stepped up and showed us who he was and showed exceptional leadership and dedicated service as mayor of this city over the past year. Thank you so much, Mayor Pete, for your service. You have been excellent.
Yes. This is such an honor. I was apprehensive in the beginning because I had former Mayor Jill Luke's shoes to fill, and, boy, they were a little tight at times. This past year has been up and down, and it's city manager's first year, and I wouldn't have wanted to go through it with anybody else than him. He, he, he pulled punches and we got stuff done, so thank you very much. You're welcome. The charter officers, anything we needed, they were right there helping. As with staff, this year was awesome. I mean, anything that staff needed, we were able to accommodate. We're moving forward, getting a lot of stuff done throughout the city. A lot of things that have been put on hold throughout the years have come to fruition, as in, like, River Road is being expanded thanks to a lot of the efforts from Mr. Cuttsinger in the county and the MPO Board. You know, hospitals coming. A lot of things happened this year that I'm proud to say that this city has been well-deserved for, and it's this board up here that worked diligently to make it happen, and I'm just glad to be a part of that, so thank you very much. Also, we're staying down here, right? Come on, Phil.
Up your hips.
Time to hit the road, brother, sir.
If you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Phil Stokes.
I, Phil Stokes.
A citizen of the state of Florida.
A citizen of the state of Florida.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
Being employed by the city of Northport.
Being employed by the city of Northport.
And recipient of public funds.
And recipient of public funds.
As such an employee.
As employee.
Do hereby solemnly swear or affirm.
Do hereby solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, defend.
Support, protect, and defend.
Support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government.
The Constitution and government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And of the state of Florida.
That I will uphold the charter.
That I will uphold the charter.
And ordinances of the city of Northport.
And ordinances of the city of Northport.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
To hold office.
To hold office.
To which I have been.
To which I have been.
Elected under the Constitution.
Elected under the Constitution.
And laws of the state.
And laws of the state.
And charter.
Charter.
And ordinances of the city of Northport.
And ordinances of the city of Northport.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of Commissioner of the city of Northport.
Of Commissioner, city of Northport.
Florida.
Florida.
On which I am now about to enter.
On which I am now about to enter.
So, help me, God.
So, help me, God.
Congratulations.
I do just want to thank everybody for all the support, for all the encouragement, for all those who voted for me. I have to tell you, it is, it is truly an honor and a privilege to be able to serve this city. As Jill said, it's all about public service, and that's really all I ever wanted to do. I will promise you this, that I will serve, work hard for this city with honesty, with integrity, and with dedication, and I truly, truly thank everybody for the privilege to go to work for you. Thank you.
If you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Pete Emmerich.
I, Pete Emmerich.
A citizen of the state of Florida.
A citizen of the state of Florida.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
Being employed by the city of Northport.
Being employed by the city of Northport.
And recipient of public funds.
And recipient of public funds.
As such an employee.
As such an employee.
Do hereby solemnly swear or affirm.
Do hereby solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government.
The Constitution and government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And of the state of Florida.
That I will uphold the charter.
That I will uphold the charter.
And the ordinances of the city of Northport.
And the ordinances of the city of Northport.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
To hold office.
To hold office.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
Under the Constitution and laws.
Under the Constitution and laws.
Of this state.
Of this state.
And charter and ordinances.
And charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Northport.
Of the city of Northport.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of Commissioner of the city of Northport, Florida.
Of the Commissioner of City of Northport, Florida.
On which I am now about to enter.
For which I am now about to enter.
So, help me, God.
So, help me, God.
Congratulations.
Just a real quick statement. I know the wife is just so happy that I'm gainfully employed again for the next four years, so I will continue to do my best, and thank you all for your support. And like I said, we've had a lot of stuff coming up that's actually going into fruition, and I'm just so glad to be able to watch that process and actually see what the results are going to be and still be able to help guide and work with staff getting that done. So, thank you very much for these next four years. Okay, that's for after the elections. All right, we're going to move on to 22-3569, and that would be the election of mayor and vice mayor. I would like to make a nomination.
We need to pass the gavel, sir, or else we'll have a repeat of 2020.
All right, I will pass the gavel.
Thank you, Mayor.
And I would like to nominate Vice Mayor Langdon to step up and fill the shoes of to become mayor.
Second.
Langdon.
Thank you.
No. You got to tell.
Oh, 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 right. So, are there any other nominations for mayor? No? Well, then, we should vote. Do I have to pass?
We have a nomination for mayor.
Thank you. We have a nomination for mayor. Would you please?
Seconded by?
Seconded...boy, I've got to shape up, huh?
I think you're nervous.
Oh, I'm just so nervous.
It doesn't need a second. It doesn't.
We, we have a motion made by Mayor Emmerich and seconded by Commissioner McDowell to nominate myself as mayor. Is there anything to that?
Yeah, we need to vote now.
Okay, let's vote. And that motion passed five to zero.
There you go.
There we go. I just wanted to clarify, did we, did he actually make that?
And so to the staff that remains, thank you for your diligence. To the staff that's new, thank you for being present and making us the best that we can be. To the directors, the assistant managers, our city manager, and to our charter officers, and path is golden. Thank you for your service, thank you for your dedication. Always keep in mind the reason that we're doing this, and that is that 81,000 people out there headed to a quarter of a million. My last thank you is to these guys right here. I stated not too long ago that I view this commission as fierce. I've been with Debbie the longest. We come into the office every day, see each other, and it's been a great relationship as friends that has built outside of serving as a commissioner. Pete, I've known longer just because of the community. I'm proud of what you did as mayor. You stayed who you were and just polished yourself up, and I'm proud of you. Thank you. Alice, I had the pleasure of nominating her as Citizen of the Year. Most of the people in the city don't realize what this woman has done for decades for this city. I met her through Petri at Storage and found out all the things that she had done, and it was just overwhelming to me that one teacher could do all that she did. She's multi-talented. I'm extremely proud of her coming into office and bringing who she is, bringing that teacher, bringing that experience from living in this city for decades. And I'm thankful for the friendship that we have developed through this time also. Our vice mayor, soon to be mayor. I have come to know Barb over this last two years. Cherish her. I really found out who she was like at the Halloween. Whoa. Found out the background and history when we went through the retreat. She's an amazing woman. Amazing woman. She's got her head on straight, as all of us, we have these fixed things the way we view, but this woman opens the book. She doesn't just leave everything to how she felt going in. She adjusts, she compromises, she's professional. I've seen her fill in under the mayor a couple of times, and she's excellent at handling a meeting. I can leave knowing that this commission's fierceness is going to continue. They're going to do great things. Phil is going to come in, roar, he's going to be fierce, and we'll accomplish what we need to accomplish in the future. Thank you. I love you. I'm still going to be around. Appreciate you.
No, it's okay. I'm just teasing. It is a privilege and an honor for me to present to Mayor Pete this gavel in recognition of his truly exceptional leadership this year. I mean, this year was not a walk in the park, and Mayor Emrich really stepped up and showed us who he was and showed exceptional leadership and dedicated service as mayor of this city over the past year. Thank you so much, Mayor Pete, for your service. You have done excellent.
Yes. This is such an honor. I was apprehensive in the beginning because I had former Mayor Joe Luke's shoes to fill, and, boy, they were a little tight at times. This past year has been up and down, and it's city manager's first year, and I wouldn't have wanted to go through it with anybody else than him. He pulled punches, and we got stuff done, so thank you very much. The charter officers, anything we needed, they were right there helping. As with staff, this year was awesome. I mean, anything that staff needed, we were able to accommodate. We're moving forward, getting a lot of stuff done throughout the city. A lot of things that have been put on hold throughout the years have come to fruition, as in, like, River Road is being expanded, thanks to a lot of the efforts from Mr. Cutzinger in the county and the MPO Board. You know, hospitals coming. A lot of things happened this year that I'm proud to say that this city has been well-deserved for, and it's this board up here that worked diligently to make it happen, and I'm just glad to be a part of that, so thank you very much. All the bosses, we're staying down here, right? Come on, Phil.
Oh, you're close.
Time to hit the road, brother, sir.
If you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Phil Stokes.
I, Phil Stokes.
A citizen of the state of Florida.
A citizen of the state of Florida.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
Being employed by the city of Northport.
Being employed by the city of Northport.
And recipient of public funds.
And recipient of public funds.
As such an employee.
As such an employee.
Do hereby solemnly swear or affirm.
Do hereby solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government.
The Constitution and government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And of the state of Florida.
That I will uphold the charter.
That I will uphold the charter.
And the ordinances of the city of Northport.
And the ordinances of the city of Northport.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
To hold office.
To hold office.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
Under the Constitution and laws.
Under the Constitution and laws.
Of this state.
Of this state.
And charter and ordinances.
And charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Northport.
The city of Northport.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of Commissioner of the city of Northport, Florida.
Of the Commissioner of the city of Northport, Florida.
On which I am now about to enter.
For which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Just a real quick statement. I know the wife is just so happy that I'm gainfully employed again for the next four years, so I will continue to do my best, and thank you all for your support, and like I said, we've had a lot of stuff coming up that's actually going into fruition, and I'm just so glad to be able to watch that process and actually see what the results are going to be, and still be able to help guide and work with staff getting that done. So thank you very much for these next four years. Now we go back up.
Take your shoes off. See you fill those shoes.
Not the high heels.
Yeah, those were the tight ones.
That's right.
Okay, that's for after the elections. All right, we're going to move on to 22-3569, and that would be the election of mayor and vice mayor. I would like to make a nomination.
We need to pass the gavel, sir, or else we'll have a repeat of 2020.